Good afternoon. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District. I saw Councilman Torrance, representing the 7th District, pop in and out. I don't know if he'll be back. Representing the office of the Mayor's Office, I've got Sophia G.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. And I don't have a representative of anybody on the line for the Council President's Office. No one from the Council President's Office, yet. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on Legislative Oversight, 22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention, for the purpose of the Committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. This bill was sponsored by myself. And today's hearing will very specifically focus on prosecution and courts. We're joined today by the Baltimore City Police Department, the State's Attorney's Office and our State's Attorney, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. I'm glad that we have the opportunity to have this discussion today. I'm also going to forward to the Committee an email from the clerk of the Circuit Court, who was unable to attend today. And it speaks to the state of his office and the court system as he sees it, with just a few months on the job. So I encourage you guys to take a look at that. When we talk about the role of police and prosecutors and courts, they have to go hand in hand. Today, I'd like to delve into this aspect of our criminal justice system in Baltimore, and how some of the offices and agencies in front of us today will work internally and with one another. If you've been following any of our regular hearings on crime, you may have heard me talk before about the life cycle of crime and our criminal justice system, starting with our efforts to prevent crimes before they occur, all the way to reentry into society for our returning citizens. For this specific part of the life cycle, which in many ways is the center of our criminal justice system, here is how I see it sort of operating in the most simple terms. When a crime is committed, the police respond, they collect evidence, and when possible, they arrest the suspect in the crime. Then the State's Attorney's Office ensures that the evidence presented by the Police Department is sufficient and prosecutes the defendant where appropriate. Finally, the courts adjudicate the case and they sentence the defendant if convicted. These offices and agencies all should work hand in hand to make sure that when someone commits a crime, they are held accountable in order to discourage criminals from recommitting crimes. When necessary, they can also serve as a check on each other to respond to deficits in a case or investigation, whether those deficits could involve a guilty person walking free or an innocent person being unjustly held behind bars. We know that no office is perfect, and I'd like us to have an honest and transparent conversation about what's working and what's not working when it comes to this critical and crucial aspect of the crime fight. I'm grateful for the conversations that I've been able to have with you, Mr. Commissioner Harrison, and our State's Attorney, Ivan Bates, in private, and I'm really looking forward to digging into this issue during this public conversation today, in order to figure out what we can do to get better outcomes from that life cycle of crime that I described earlier. So I know we have a couple of presentations today. Before I turn it over, I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Porter has joined the hearing. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Harrison.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the Committee, and good afternoon, all who are in attendance. And I have our senior executive team all present with me today. And look, I won't be before you long. I will simply say that since the arrival and inauguration of Mr. Bates as our State's Attorney, we have had solid communication, solid collaboration, solid coordination. Those three things are in sync. And we, in his first couple of weeks as being the State's Attorney, this entire senior team met with his entire senior team and began to map out how the relationship would look, how the coordination, collaboration, and communication would look. All of us have lived up to that at this point. I should say that even as we talk about coordination, collaboration, and communication with MONC, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, it is the same with the State's Attorney's Office. And now, all of us are meeting regularly. Our senior teams are meeting with their colleagues and counterparts at the various agencies. Everything we're doing is synchronized, so that when we make an arrest, that we can track those arrests all the way through which cases get accepted, which cases do not, and why, so that if it is of some substance, that something we did or failed to do, we can course correct that. That's always been the goal, that remains the goal, especially in cases like murder, shootings, robberies, and people carrying illegal guns or illegally carrying those illegal guns. We want to make sure that we know why those cases make it through and why they don't, so we can always course correct. The State's Attorney and I have regularly scheduled monthly meetings. As a matter of fact, he and I have a monthly meeting that's on the calendar for the 15th of this month, that's next week. And we will have a lunch meeting every single month to make sure that he and I are always on the same page. Obviously, Director Jackson and I meet pretty regularly, and we all meet and have met in our monthly GVRRS Partners Meeting, where we just met last week and went over everything pertaining to GVRRS, where we were, where we are, where we need to go. And so you'll hear from members of my team today that will validate that coordination, collaboration, and communication. And I remain available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Next up, we've got State's Attorney Bates. And I know you guys have a joint presentation, and invite you to speak before you do so, or if you want to jump into that, you're welcome to.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Committee. So I want to echo everything the Commissioner said. The biggest thing that we wanted to make sure we did, we recognized our number-one partner in terms of law enforcement for us is without a doubt the Baltimore City Police Department. That had to make sure we had a really good relationship. Even before I even came into the office, I had the opportunity to go to lunch with the Commissioner. And from there, we began to map out my vision, how I view things. And he talked about his vision. And I think that has allowed us to sit down and hit the ground running on behalf of the citizens. I think having our executive team sit, talk, meet, talk about what we want to do in the future, have that understanding. One of the things that we were able to do when I was a young prosecutor, I went to the police lab. I learned how they do their jobs, so I could be a better prosecutor. My team in my office was able to start doing in-house training on an in-depth level with young prosecutors last Friday, and half of the young prosecutors did in-house training, the other half went to Baltimore City Police Department's lab to understand how that works. So it's not just the upper echelon in terms of the offices, but it's also making sure that the prosecutors on the ground, that they're there, that they're learning, they're understanding what's happening, they're having better relationships. Those better relationships allow us to have the dialogue that we need to do to have better cases, so that we can now have that relationship, that understanding with the police to say, this is what a good car stop is, this is an illegal car stop. This is how, this is why the evidence was suppressed, and this is what we need to do in the future. It's a learning mechanism, it's going to be a little while for us to kind of get to where we need to be, but we're moving in that direction, that's the biggest thing that we can do. For me, just looking at the State's Attorney's Office in reference to this process, we have a shortage of attorneys. We've been hiring attorneys, like we've hired almost 18 of now. And so we're constantly and consistently doing that. One of the things we also recognize, we learned, is that when you look at body camera footage, and it's something that the police, they all have those body camera recording devices on their person. We looked at the office around our office and around the state to see what's going on. In Anarondo County, there are 875 officers, they have 13 and 1/2 individuals that look and review body camera footage. The standard says for every 100 officers, you should have one person reviewing body camera footage at least. Baltimore County, they have 12 individuals reviewing body camera footage, and they have about 1,200 officers. I think Baltimore City, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner, about 22 to 2,400 officers?
Yes, 2140.
2140. We have four people reviewing body camera footage. So that shows my prosecutors are overwhelmed. So one of the things we have done, we made a request to the Legislature and to the Governor, asking for additional funds, so we can expand our body-worn camera division, to make sure that we have the individuals who can do the body camera footage, review it. And that does two things. One allows us to have better cases, when you have someone doing it, not an overworked prosecutor. But also, if we see something that we can hopefully share with the Police Department for training purposes, we definitely will. So we understand what we need to do, we're looking at infrastructure to make those changes, but at first, we had to rebuild a really good relationship, and that's where in the process of doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, just let me know.
Will do. Next, we've got up MONC.
Thank you, Chair. Is this on? Yes. So I am John Hoffman, I'm Policy and Research Associate Director at MONC. I'm here representing with Director Jackson is in Annapolis today, so that's why she's not here. We are going to, I think, focus on answering specific questions, because I think that's why we're here, and you gave an overview of the ideal scenario of how this would all work in an ideal world. And we've talked, we have a slide presentation with a high-level description of some of these basics, but I don't know if we're, we can go through those quickly. Whoever's speaking to each part will get up and introduce themselves and speak to that, but then we want to make sure we have time for you all to ask questions. And I think, you know, in terms of MONC's role in this, one place where I see us coming in, especially moving forward increasingly, is in basically evaluating the same questions you're asking. So increasingly, doing analyses and looking at data and tracking what's happening in all these areas, in this part of the life cycle of crime and all these spots. And that'll help us to both flag things and inform what we can do in response. So an example that would come up is if we see a spike in FTAs, and that will raise questions about, why is that happening?
F-DAs.
I'm sorry, failure to appear.
FTAs.
I'm just giving a concrete example of the type of thing that now, as we're looking at the data, which we'll get into these when we talk more, but you know, that's a type of thing that MONC, as an independent sort of research and policy arm evaluating this, could see something like that and then dig deeper, and often, it'll be an interplay of all agencies involved in the solution. So, thank you for your time.
So I understand someone's got a presentation.
Yes.
There we go.
So there's going to be a few seconds lag, but I think we'll just go in order...
Can you please use the microphone?
Can everyone hear me okay?
The folks online, and for the record, would need to...
So there's a few seconds of a lag between the slides when I click, but the first group of slides are, I believe, BPD will be, I think possibly various people getting up and quickly going through them.
Hi, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. I think this slide we already covered in the Commissioner and State's Attorneys talking points, so if we want to, yeah. Thank you.
Do you want to try and...
Yes, I can. Can you hear me if I sit here?
Can you please use the microphone, just for the record and folks online?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So Bates, I did have the opportunity to go to a roll call, and that was very important. It was midnight roll call in Central District. And it was really important, because one of the things I did, talk to the officers, and that's part of rebuilding the relationship, having the communication and talking collaboratively about what all we can do. If I do not have the trust of the police, the Police Department, then our office cannot effectively do the job. One of the things that was very important to also note was that they talked about citations. That was a question that was asked, and we can get into this, you know, later on, but you know, what are we going to do about low-level offenses? And that's part of the collaborative piece, where now we're talking to the Police Department. We've talked to MONC to bring everybody in to figure out the best way in which to handle this. And, you know, the officers, 21, 2,100 officers. So do we want to go ahead and just have everybody arrested? And those are the types of questions that I received that night. What would this particular situation look like? And those are the discussions that we're having now with the Police Department. And so for that particular evening, you know, it was a really good chance to hear from the officers that are in the community making those arrests, for me, but for them to also Here, one of the things that we did, we had a town hall. And the town hall was the Police Commissioner, the U.S. Attorney, the Attorney General, and the Inspector General. We are, and I will also say, one of the other individuals that I neglected to invite that night was the Sheriff's Department as well. All of us are the individuals that must work collaboratively to fight crime. I did later on have an individual meeting with the Sheriff and Sheriff's Department to talk about what that looks like, how we can work together, and even going out in the community, talking about collaboratively, talking and working with the police around the community, hearing the concerns that are brought from the community to the police. And those are things that we've been trying to deal with in our first 60 days on our job.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee. My name is Major Steve Omen. I'm representing the Compliance Bureau for the BPD today. To kind of speak to State's Attorney Bates' opening remarks, the Compliance Bureau, as you may know, encompasses, you know, most of the consent decree-related items with the BPD, but it includes the training section of the BPD. And to State's Attorney Bates' statement earlier, we've already begun to collaborate and have conversations with his office regarding those items that he mentioned, use of force, stop searches and arrests, trainings in those areas between the BPD and his State's Attorneys, to make sure that not only are we complying with the decree and our policies, but presenting the best cases for trial. It includes things like mock trial prep, that we used to have years ago, that his office is bringing back and collaborating with our office. In addition, the Compliance Bureau also houses the Court Liaison Unit, and that unit coordinates with the State's Attorneys and the courts, ensure officers are present for court, evidence is where it needs to be, and liaising with the State's Attorney on a day-to-day, like in-the-moment trial basis. Additionally, mentioning the Body-Worn Camera Program, that is also housed within the Compliance Bureau. And to kind of help facilitate the staffing issues, our office coordinates very closely with the State's Attorney's Office to ensure that the electronic evidence and case folders are created, so that they're prepared for trial. And then finally, with regard to policy, we have collaborated already and continue to do so specifically with regard to those lesser offenses that State's Attorney Bates had mentioned. With that, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Colonel Jones, Chief of Patrol. So in reference to transparency and collaboration, on the 27th of last month, executives from BPD met at the State's Attorney's Office in reference to our Special Weapons and Tactics Team, our SWAT, in their entry process. So we reviewed our, basically, our search and seizure policy 1007, as well as our arrest warrant policy 1104. What we did was, in this meeting, it was providing all parties the ability to leave no stone unturned, and that we were checking everything in reference to policy, best practices going forward, and a collaboration. So in this meeting, all of the issues that were raised were addressed. Those that weren't addressed, at that time, there was a deadline set in reference to what was needed in reference to getting the State's Attorney's Office and the State's Attorney himself, where he needed to be feeling comfortable with where we were with the warrant process as far as notification of each other. So we established a soft handoff of executives from both teams, as well as our SWAT commanders in reference to who needed to be notified in reference to specific warrants, and how that warrant process would go, as well as the idea of working collaboratively together for those warrants, and an effort of transparency. I know dates were set in reference to our training, that the State's Attorney's Office was given the opportunity to, in a future date, come and see what the SWAT team, how they practice, how they do their dynamic entries. So I know that date has been proposed, I'm not sure with its schedule, has it been accepted yet, but the idea is not only showing how the SWAT team trains, but also giving body-worn camera footage of previous search and seizure warrants, to show just exactly what the SWAT members do. The extensive training that these individuals go through on a weekly basis to become the experts that they are, realizing that there is no dynamic entry of just entering a house, but giving every available opportunity for individuals to come out, because we realize that the less intrusive, you know, more appropriate response is better in reference to public safety and overall safety of those individuals involved in those homes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Brian Nato, Deputy Police Commissioner for the Public Integrity Bureau. Tomorrow, we have a meeting of the State's Attorney's Office at our office, at PIB, to actually discuss the implementation and new processes associated with HB 670. Some changes in the law have concerned us, that we need to work with the State's Attorney's Office to make sure the cases are being investigated as appropriately as possible, so that they can bring criminal charges if necessary, and we can bring administrative charges as necessary. Also, we're going to work with them tomorrow to review all new and upcoming misconduct investigations, to make sure that they have the opportunity to view those claims and make decisions as appropriate, and also to work on Bradyo-Guglio processes that make it as expedientially as possible. We can provide the information to their office for prosecutions. Thank you.
Chief Rana De La Raco. As the State's Attorney mentioned, we had a visit, so he came personally to our lab and toured, which was really great. On March 1st, we also had a really large meeting with the executive team of the State's Attorney's Office, and it was about a two-and-a-half hour-long meeting, and we had a lot of good discussion. And just this week, we went to the judges and we spoke with them about forensic genetic genealogy testing, so we've had a lot of collaboration recently.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee. Colonel Brown, Chief of Detectives. I thank you for this opportunity to speak on our renewed relationship with the State's Attorney's Office. And as everyone has already stated, we met earlier this year with State's Attorney Bates and his executive team, and that meeting was refreshing. And I'll say refreshing, because at that meeting, we were able to reestablish, you know, our partnerships, collaborations, and both share our eagerness and willingness to work together to help reduce the violence in our city. State's Attorney Bates, I know, has already been scheduling, you know, some roll call visits to the districts. He's also, you know, including coming to criminal investigation divisions as well for these roll calls, which I think will be huge as a morale booster, just for our detectives to hear specifically from, you know, State's Attorney Bates outlining what he and his teams may have expectations for us, you know, when it comes to investigations, you know, interviews, warrants, but ultimately, to help us build better and stronger cases. Chief Donnelly and I, we are in communications now, looking for dates so that we can restart our reoccurring meetings monthly. And with these meetings, normally, our teams meet together, so that we can discuss, and this across the executive team also, including Patrol, Colonel Jones, and his team. But this is where we discuss, you know, any of our concerns that either agency may have, that, you know, that we see that could be a bigger issue for us in the long run, but it's also for us to problem-solve, you know, take some corrective actions, if we need to implement anything new, some protocols, but also need just to make sure that our teams are collaborating and working well, just as we are. I would just like to highlight, as successful as already this year, it just shows, you know, the collaboration and synergy that's already occurring between our two agencies. For this year alone, we all have already had 21 warrants issued for homicides. And that is huge, because we have not seen that number open for us as much. We've already made 20 homicide arrests, five for this year, and 15 for those prior, for prior-year incidents. And I think that is important to highlight, because it not only speaks of the collaboration, you know, occurring, when we are still having unfortunate new incidents, but it also is speaking to our prior incidents, that shows, you know, our families, victims' families, you know, survivor families, that we are still working collaboratively on all cases that, you know, we have, to help bring a little bit more closure to the families.
Good afternoon, Chair Conway, members of the Committee. My name is Erin Murphy. I'm the fairly new Director of Government Affairs for BPD, obviously also an alumni of the State's Attorney's Office. I just wanted to point out that, obviously, gun violence is a huge issue for BPD, as well as State's Attorney's Office. And I just wanted to note that we actually have BPD detectives that actually are located on the 9th floor at the State's Attorney's Office and work specifically with the Gun Violence Unit. And I just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
So one of the things that I've actually quickly realized is that one of the roles of the State's Attorney's Office is go down to Annapolis and talk about the laws and how they will apply. One of the things I've really been focused on specifically is a law, House Bill 481. And what it looks like and what it talks about is illegal handguns. Right now, the law in the state of Maryland is twofold. If you're 18 to 20 years of age, you're caught with an illegal handgun, you're facing five years in jail and a $10,000 fine. If you're 21 or above, you're facing a sentence of three years and a $2,500 fine. I even wrote op-ed, that was actually, I think, in the Baltimore Sun today. And basically, I'd just like to make sure that they're same across the board. Everybody's treated the same, I'd like it to be five years, $10,000 fine. It's not going to curb gun violence all of a sudden, but what it does, it's a tool in the toolbox that helps us use that. The judges still have the opportunity to sentence individuals as they see fit, the law is fair. And one of the things that we've done is gone down to Annapolis to try to talk about the law, why we'd like to have the law. We've spoken to the Baltimore City delegation, we've had the opportunity to testify in front of the House. And so this one of the tools in the toolbox that we think is important to have, not only for the police to have, but more importantly, for us, the prosecutors, and the court system to have. I've done a lot of research on these particular issues, and one of the things that I just recently found is research that came from an organization called The Collaborative. They were a group of institutions, higher-level educational institutions in Washington, D.C., George Washington, Georgetown, Howard University, George Mason, I think even American University. They got together, they looked at, and they have a number of priorities, a number of suggestions. One of the suggestions that they put was that, besides, you know, gun buybacks, the holistic approaches, and those are very important, they also said, we must focus to lower gun violence, focus on guns, illegal guns, prosecution and sentencing. So I feel the bill is right of what they're talking about, and I have been very supportive of that bill, and the Baltimore City Police Department has been very supportive of that bill as well.
So just to speak quickly to MONC's experience with the courts, one area that we're working in as we manage the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, which pulls in leadership from the State's Attorney, the Police Department, and others to, for the purpose of coordinating around this exact issue. So some of the work groups that we have in the CJCC include backlog of cases, trying to address the issue of both felony and misdemeanor cases backlogging the courts, and also highlighting warrants. So on that, we are, MONC is bringing onboard a warrants analyst within the next few months that we got funding for, that's going to be working on analyzing and helping to close open warrants. And we've also begun discussions that came out of the CJCC in the last meeting about instituting electronic warrants. So that's in discussion period, but phase, but it's an example of how MONC is working with other partners with respect to the courts. Sorry, I forgot to change this. So another area is that we have an ongoing interest in diversion work. We've begun conversations with Secretary of the State DJS, Vincent Scheraldi, on partnering for young, to address diversion around young people. And in general, our hope is to, we're interested in being involved in any ways where we can address and help people when they're at a stage where they've been arrested, but there's other options to make, that all parties involved think makes sense for what to do, moving forward with those individuals. parties involved think makes sense for what to do moving forward with those individuals. And finally, I just wanted to touch on our, we just recently launched a public safety accountability dashboard that for the first time includes data from not only Police Department, but the State's Attorney's Office, and we are very appreciative of everyone's cooperation in sharing that data and work with, working with us on connecting these different pieces of the, as you would say, the life cycle of the crime so that the public can actually track a case from, exactly as you were referring to, from the time of an incident, and we, this is obviously too small for people to see, but it's, you know, we intentionally are linking it to a crime incident because we, with the idea that someone's going to be interested in starting there and then seeing what happens to that case. And I'm just mentioning this not only because we made the dashboard available as part of the CJCC and its experience working with the courts, but moving forward, it's an example of the kind of data that we will be digging into and analyzing and looking at to get a better sense of what's going on and how we can better inform policy. I think that's it for our presentation stage, and we're open to any questions.
Thank you. We're going to open up to questioning, and I've got quite a few. I'm really, really happy to hear that you guys are finding ways to work together and, you know, hopefully be more productive in the work that lives between you. I have a bunch of questions, I'll try to get to what I can and allow my colleagues to ask questions as well, I'm sure they have questions. I want to acknowledge, Councilman Glover's joined the hearing quite some time ago. My first question, one of the things that I hear about a lot, and I guess anyone can sort of answer this question from your various perspectives, is offenders will end up back on the streets for any number of reasons. I was really curious if we had a sense, given the data that we're beginning to share, a sense for why that may have been happening or is happening. I don't know where it is, I don't have metrics on that information. I think the data collaborative or sharing that we're doing now is going to be very, very helpful in helping us identify and pinpoint exactly what pain points we're having, but it's certainly something I hear very often, someone committed a crime, everybody knows that person in the streets, everybody knows that person in the community, we catch them for said crime, and they're back on the streets in a week or two. Can we talk a little bit about that and if we have any data or insights on what's going on there, and there may be a number of insights, but please?
Thank you for the question. I don't know that we have any data in our hand today to give you. What I can do is tell you, going back in time, we always wanted to know why, so if a person is, if a case for an arrest is accepted, fine, we want to be able to track that. If a case is not accepted and the person is then not accepted into the jail and/or released because the case is not accepted, we want to know why that is. And that's an agreement that we have with our State's Attorney, it's part of the MOU so that we can track that to course correct, as I stated in my opening statements. We've had that conversation with our new State's Attorney, and I think now we're working to build the correct protocols to inform us when that instance happens, that a case is not accepted because of a lack of probable cause or a lack of some nexus or some missing evidence or whatever it is, so that we can course correct in a training matter so that that won't happen again or we can fix that problem. Now, there's the issue of bail, where people are arrested and because of their arrest and criminal history are entitled to bail, and people are back on the streets pre-trial because they're out on bail. That's a different issue than the case was not accepted and the person is back out on the street because of either a failure or a mistake or something missing. And those are two things that we both want to be able to know about, and so if, then it brings up the new conversation that the mayor and I went to testify in Annapolis about home monitoring. So if a person is arrested and is assigned to home monitoring pre-trial because the case is accepted, we want to know about that if a person absconds and violates and steps out of the required area for them to be remanded. That's a, that's another conversation that is before the state in a bill as we speak. And so in our early conversations, we agreed for information sharing, number one, to be able to inform the Police Department of cases where something happened and the case is not accepted. Secondly, we want to be able to track, and I think we can do that when people are arrested, the case is accepted, but the person is out on bail. And then post-trial, when a person is then released, that's a, that's a conversation to bring in with courts and corrections at the local and state level for us to be informed about that, but we are in solidarity and in agreement about the information sharing and how to go about giving us that, and I think, I can't speak for the State's Attorney in our office, but I think they're working, at least how it was explained, to build the capacity so that we can reach this agreement that we have.
Yes, we are in a situation, it was young office, and one of the things that I actually, I think I really began to have a better understanding, is the office is in pretty dire straits for a number of reasons, and they were kind of treading water, they were doing everything they could to just hold the ship afloat. They did a really good job, to be honest, when you sit down and look at what was going on, the infrastructure, where young office were learning, which is why we really looked deeper into the training. And why do I say that? Because you'll have cases, and when you have an experienced defense attorney with a case, that could be 50/50 either way, that experience is going to win. And so then we found out sometimes we're losing some of those cases, but we also realized we had to make a training decision to invest in our young prosecutors. We've also brought in a number of older prosecutors who have a number, a level of experience. So what we want to do, I don't know really know what happened, I've seen some of the data in terms of what happened with the past administration, but I can really talk about where we're going from January 3rd on. And so having the relationship with the Baltimore City Police Department, having the relationship with the officers, making sure my prosecutors know the officers, having those relationships, we've changed victim witness, we have a phenomenal person we've hired for victim witness, that's important. So that will be the liaison really between my office and the Police Department, so when there's an officer who's needed for a case, we will reach out in advance, we're not waiting until the last second. Those are the things that we realized were some of the problems we were having, the officer may not have received a summons or subpoena, they may not know, the officer may have a 95 in because they're on vacation, we did not know. Therefore, the court's saying, oh, we have to dismiss this case. What are the things that we can fix, the processes that are wrong? The other thing we've got to look at is the courts. So and I understand the courts a couple of things, individual arrested, first person individual sees when they're arrested is the commissioner, commissioner's going to release some individuals, may not release others. Once that person is not released, then they go see a judge. One of the things that I'm kind of scratching my head with, it appears that more of the judges are releasing individuals with illegal handguns on electronic home detention. Well, that's their prerogative, but we want to make sure that it's done in a proper way because even though on electronic home detention, where are they going, how are they being held, and to make sure they're not cutting off the ankle braces, as the commissioner mentioned, and they're back on the streets. And so those are types of issues that we're looking at, those are things that we're looking to try to have a better understanding and study. Also, in the juvenile section, you know, under the juvenile bill that passed last year, the State's Attorney's Office does not have the power that it used to at one time period to understand what cases will be charged and what cases won't. DJS makes that decision, and because they make that decision, DJS has the decision to do whatever they want to in terms of the young people, whether they want to hold them or they want to release them. Now, of course, they still go before the court, but DJS is the one that makes the decision. For instance, you could have a case where a young person's caught with a gun, and, you know, DJS may say it's not a violent case, so we're not necessarily looking to try to hold this individual, and that's their prerogative, that's what the law says. But I think it's important for individuals within the community to understand the way the system works. We're all parts of the system, Police Department, State's Attorney's Office, we all have a role. I can try to fix what's in my wheelhouse, i.e. have better cases, better communication with the police, better working relationships. However, I do not have control over the judges if they wish to release individuals, that's what they will do. We'll sit down and argue against it and give the reasons why in that regard, and also when the juveniles, looking at DJS, they have a larger role. Under the bill that passed last year, they're the ones who make the decisions on that. It's really been taken out of the hands of the state.
I'll add to that, some are released with low bail, some are released with no bail, and I think if I'm correct, the juveniles, more often than not, if it's not a shooting and/or murder, many of them are released with no bail. And so we are saying that, but that is far beyond either of our purview. And yes, we sometimes see those individuals reoffending.
That's really, really interesting and helpful. Got a couple of things running through my mind, so one of the things this committee is working on setting up is a hearing much like this that will pull in state agencies that are relevant to this sort of life cycle of crime, realizing that some of the decisions made at that level have an impact on our ability to follow through on some of these issues. And I think what's really important here, and speaking from my experience with Gunstat as we used to do it, and I think it was a really, really important tool then, it sounds like GVRS stat is kind of what that is. So, State's Attorney Bates, you participate in Gunstat as, excuse me, GVRS stat?
I'm learning more about it, but in many ways, I think it is. Mr. Donnelly, Deputy Donnelly from our office participates in that, and so we're trying to have a better understanding what's going on with the guns, who has the guns, so in some ways it is, but in other ways it's not. I'd probably say from what I understand about Gunstat, and I have a small understanding of it, I think GVRS kind of tries to take it on another level to have a better understanding of who these individuals are, their backgrounds, and understanding for us how we can try to go after prosecuting them and holding them accountable in another way. You know, what they're doing and what everybody's been doing in the Western District has been pretty phenomenal when you look at the stats, you know, but that also means from our standpoint, once again, I go back to the law, when you sit down an individual, let them know that they could potentially be prosecuted for carrying guns and doing all that, you know, if an individual says, oh, well, yeah, the only thing I'm going to get is three years for carrying an illegal handgun, and the Restorative Justice Act, that's 25%, so that's eight months, okay, there's cost benefit analysis in the streets that they're going to make, and the cost benefit analysis, say, I'm going to carry this gun, you know, and so for me, understanding under GVRS, one of the things you talk about is talk about the harshness in the penalties that are consequences, but if there aren't really penalties or consequences, the individuals make the cost benefit analysis that will say, you know what, I'll carry this gun. And I understand that's where they're coming from, but from our standpoint, we still have to make sure we enforce the laws.
Yeah, it was, so from the experience that I saw from the Gunstat model, and I'm not sure how much of that we adopted in the GVRS stat model, but we did a couple of things. We used the gun offender registry lists to regularly check on people who had arrests for gun crimes, and so that was an important opportunity to understand where they were, what they were doing, and have regular check-ins. From there, also, we focused on trigger pullers, people who had the capacity to use that gun or to use a gun again, and very specifically, one of the things we did, and I see some of that happening here, is we were using data from the Police Department to understand all the intelligence that we had on these particular set of folks, and then, once we did have arrests, everything that happened in the prosecution thereafter and the outcomes, and it allowed us to ask very particular questions about why people were getting out, where we were dropping the ball on prosecution, and sometimes it had nothing to do necessarily with the State's Attorney's Office, we couldn't get a witness to come in, or people didn't show up to court, officer didn't show up to court. You know, we took the very same approach and we applied it to DVstat, Domestic Violence Stat, and we started looking into why a lot of domestic violence cases weren't actually moving forward, and it was because a lot of the victims were uncomfortable actually coming in to testify, and, but we also realized that more than 50% of the people, and I forget the exact number, it's because they didn't have transportation. Little things like that, or they didn't know the court date. Things that we could very easily begin to get to the bottom of, and it didn't take groundbreaking changes. So what I would love, love, love to see is more capacity to track and understand that data component at every step of the way. When I talk about that life cycle, I want to understand when, you know, person A makes it to step two, you know, why they're there and what we can learn from the next person that then goes through that step, so we can be a little bit smarter the next time around. And so I'm encouraged by the fact that we're sharing that data again, I think it means a lot, but I have so many questions about what's happening between that we can't identify now because we don't, or maybe we do, and maybe I just need to look into it, maybe Monty can talk about the public safety dashboard and what it can and cannot do. But it can allow us to be so much smarter from the policing perspective and how we interact with folks in neighborhoods, and from the prosecution perspective, what we know to be some of our pitfalls between the two. So just my thoughts. I'm actually going to hand off to one of my colleagues, because I've been talking a lot, I'll start with Councilman Cohen, if you've got any.
International Women's Day here, sir, why don't we pass my colleague?
Thank you. Councilman Porter.
Oh, heavens. Wow. So following up, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, following up on that line of questioning, with the accountability dashboard, what's the timeline for execution and completion?
So if I understand the question, the, it is executed, it's up.
Is it?
Dashboard is live.
Is live?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
You know, and I think we're moving to the chairman's point, we're having discussions about that exact thing, we were calling it, I was just talking this week with people about setting up, so we have IPV stat set up already, it's not public yet, but the plan is to integrate that in, and all these will be, you know, integrated together to trace, but one thing that we now have, I think the data for is exactly that, is the courts piece and to, and to track that, and the only thing I would add to that also is I think there's room for old fashioned, like, field research or case study where, you know, I'll just share one anecdote, I heard recently was, you know, paper, papers were getting stuck, not moving from the courts, and the person went there one day and literally was just trying to trace from where it was supposed to start, physically going to where it was going, and it turned out they, they had piles out piled up because they didn't have enough briefcases, so he went and got more briefcases and that solved the problem, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, we have, we're building up, our policy and research team could have the capacity to actually go, when we see something happen, and do some interviews and just try to make sense of what's going on.
Okay, for the public, for the public knowledge, could you share that website?
Yes, well, right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so one, it's on two different sites, Open Baltimore and Monsi's website, which I believe is, is anyone here from our office, www, is it monsi.baltimore.org?
Okay. My second question has to do with the BPD oversight hearings. One of the, as we transition into local control, I am more and more, more and more interested about standard operating procedures and how the cases that you mentioned were not being prosecuted, we are taking a log of those and kind of doing a lessons learned. So could you share kind of how you envision gathering that data from the State's Attorney's Office, if the cases were not being prosecuted, what the course correction is with MBPD and how you're implementing it into your overall operation?
Thank you. I think the spirit in which we made that agreement some time ago was to get the data through an analyst that was hired, funded by the mayor's office, hired by the State's Attorney, but works at the State's Attorney's Office. I know that was pre-COVID, and then we went into COVID, there were some slowdowns into getting the MOU up and running, and I think now it's about building the capacity for someone to give us either aggregate data or break that down for us so that we can know on which cases that we submit that are refused because of a lack of probable cause or lack of evidence or whatever it may be, to get that. When we get that, our goal is to make sure that we can course correct, not just with that individual officer, but with the entire department through a policy, either new policy or through training or a combination of both. Roll call training, in-service training, the first thing we want to do is correct the officer, and then correct all the personnel working with that officer who very well could all be doing it the same way. And then the larger picture is to make sure the entire department is aware of what happened and how we course correct. We would be very happy to come before the council and explain how we learned of, of a refusal and how we course corrected, or how we learned of a group of them in a month period or in the first quarter, second quarter, and generally speaking, if we had the number of them pertaining to guns and our specific crimes, what we did to course correct. I'd be more than welcome to come and demonstrate how we learned it. I'd be more than welcome to come and, and demonstrate how we learned it, how the system was built for us to learn it and how the infrastructure was built for us to correct it.
Okay, no, that, that actually makes a lot of sense. And I'm wondering, will something like that be ready for the next B P D oversight hearing?
I, I don't know the answer to that at the moment. I think the State's Attorney and I and the, the people who are actually doing the work have to really sit down and figure out if the State's Attorney's Office is, has the capacity to prepare that for us. And do we have the capacity to receive it? And then what do we do? And I think that's, that takes some time. I believe we'll be able to speak to the process next time. If it's ready, the answer will be yes. If it's not ready, the answer will be this is what we're doing about it.
Yes, um, from our standpoint, we've decided to look at how we're dealing with data. And actually, it's funny, you, you, we talked about that last Wednesday and Thursday. The person who handles my data material, the, we sent him down to Miami. And actually, the federal government paid for that specifically to allow him to have a better understanding of what we need to do, how we need to pull the data and how we can be more effective in getting that type of data that the police need and that we need. So give us some time. We're just, my whole feeling was, well, this is a gut, this is a rebuild. Let me figure out what we really need to do. Let me figure out what works. For instance, we're figuring out processes. And I want to give you something that seems so simple, but it's something that we had to kind of learn the hard way, so to speak. When an individual has charged with a handgun, illegal handgun, wear, carry and transport, like I said, they're facing three years. They're arrested. But let's say they've already been convicted of one. We want to file enhanced penalties. But because the way the district court is set up, that case will be in within 25 to 30 days max in court. Now, when you file enhanced penalties, you're no longer facing three years, you're facing 10 years. So if it's a good case and the defense attorney is looking at it from the body camera footage, they know their client could get 10 years. If we don't file our enhanced penalties right away, because enhanced penalties, you must file them 30 days before the trial date. So we need to put together mechanisms so when they're arrested, what are we doing? How do we flag it and how do we do that right away? And it's just those small little things, because the defense attorney, I don't, I'd rather go ahead and take three years in a district court, because that's eight months, as opposed to my client getting 10 years, because that's gonna be maybe three and a half years in division and correction. And so for us, learning those processes, and that's why I say it's been a gut. Give us the opportunity, because when we look at data, those are types of things we, the data wasn't necessarily telling us or showing us. And so it's just understanding every single aspect. So I would probably say, I don't want to commit to having the, the data the next meeting, but give us a little bit of time. We also recognize with the data analyst, who do we have? What are we looking at specifically? But we needed to understand what is the data we specifically need to be able to do our job, to learn how to do our job better, more effective.
I appreciate that, State's Attorney, State's Attorney Bates. I did have an additional question related to that. From your comments today, I'm hearing a lot of professional development, technical assistance. Is that a specific line item within your budget that you'll be presenting in the next funding cycle?
Yes, it definitely will be. With, with, with the, the city, with the state. And even we filed some requests with the federal government that were due on Friday, and we filed those. What we really realized was we're probably maybe 60 or so attorneys minimum short. I'd like to have at least 200. I think we swore in 139, some have left, some have come back. And so let's say 140, so about 60 attorneys short. What we also realize is that it's very difficult to hire experienced lateral attorneys because there's a high demand. So we have to do it as I say, the Ori way, hire young lawyers. So what we've done, and we've received, and the other day, we received applicants from Louisiana and from Minnesota. Read about, heard about what we're doing, wanted to be a part of it, finishing law school. So what we've done is say, hey, come to Baltimore, work as a law clerk. When you pass the bar, we'll have a job for you. And so this way, we can develop them, get them here, understand the process, understand what court's about, so we can hit the ground running. But we have to put together our training program, and that's what we're doing.
I appreciate that. You know, one of the things that I was a little bit concerned about at, during the last budget cycle was the number of attorneys that were down in the S A O's office, open positions. And so I'm hoping this cycle, we kind of see a little bit more meat and potatoes to your budget that not only has an increased training, a professional development plan, but a complete life cycle of training of young attorneys and making sure that they stay in Baltimore for the continuity of your office and continuity of public safety. Same goes for Monty as well. One of the things that I asked Director Jackson was about the staffing model, making sure that you all are at capacity. And she confirmed that you are, similar to B P D. Those are the types of things that we are going to be looking for and how each of your, how, how each of your offices are not only recruiting the best and brightest here in Baltimore, because I believe that we are brilliant here in Baltimore, but the best and brightest here in Baltimore, but that we are staying here in Baltimore. We are providing a livable wage for them to stay in Baltimore so that they can stay here and that we have some continuity within these agencies. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, all excellent points. Councilman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks everyone for coming out this evening, this afternoon. My questions are to, to both of you guys, you know, the State's Attorney's Office and the Baltimore City Police Department. You know, we know that recently there's been a spike in young, young people, particularly around our public schools. Are you guys, or have you had any conversations with, you know, North Avenue far as Baltimore City Public Schools in reference to how you guys could work together with law enforcement from that agency in reference to, you know, curving the crown that we see amongst our young people at our schools?
I'll say yes. We, we, I personally spoke with the superintendent on the, on the actual crime scene of the murder that happened in the park just the other day. And we're in constant conversations and collaboration with the school police on an everyday basis about deployment strategies, visibility, who's not in school, what, what do we collectively need to do? Where we need to be and when we need to be there. So I think at, at the deployment level, the, the Chief of Patrol's Office, the deputy commissioners are always in touch with the, the school police at the operational level on deployment strategies. And yes, we're in constant communication with the school about what needs to happen to keep people safe when they are going to school, when they're coming from school. I think a lot of what has happened, happened actually during school hours. And the conversation about who is allowed to leave school or when they are not in school, why were they not in school? And what measures are in place to help with that? Those are beyond the police departments, school police and/or city police, but the larger conversations about what happens during school hours in schools and how do we create public safety and, and safety for them when they leave school to go home on their, on their way to school? And the bigger question is what happens during hours when they're not in school? So those are things we're always incorporating into our deployment strategy with school police and with other police departments that are in the city, because kids are always going everywhere. They have to travel by public transportation, sometimes across the city. So we're always, that's always a part of our deployment strategy conversations.
Go ahead.
Same question. Yes, sir. We haven't had those conversations. The biggest reason, we wanted to sit down and understand what's going on our end. So one of the things that I asked the head of Juvenile to do is, based on the law changing, D J S makes the decision about what cases will be prosecuted. So I've asked him to give me the research and numbers that he's been keeping himself. What are the cases we would have suggested be prosecuted that haven't? And so I've asked him, and hopefully within the next week to week and a half, I should have that information. Once we have that information allows us, one of the things I think we realize we need to do, we need to have a person in my office who understands young people, the school system, who's almost like a liaison to help us with North Avenue and things. So we've identified that's a need. We've interviewed an individual that I do believe will most likely come on. But before we brought that individual on, we need to understand the job, the job description to make sure that it could work. But that is something, that was a need that we saw going in. That's a need that we're working to try to fill. But we also want to have the data to understand how the new change in law is affecting us so we can have a better understanding of maybe what's going on with some of these young people that we could have had our opportunity to wrap our arms around them a lot earlier. For instance, I know one of the issues that we see sometimes, you see a school fight. Well, you sit down and say, we're just gonna dismiss and everybody go their way. But to me, that's the perfect opportunity to give that young person the resource to wrap around services. Because first it's a fight, then before you know it, there's picking up a gun. And before you know it, unfortunately, she's using that gun. And so to me, it's how we're looking at this, but we first wanted to look at the data. And that's why I've asked a young, a young man to put that together.
Thank you. And, you know, go ahead.
I'll, I'll add to that, because in every single case, what we have learned is that school, and let me give credit to the school police and applaud the school police, because in every single case, school police were either on the campus at dismissal or in the immediate vicinity at the time of dismissal and during the day. And the issue is not necessarily the deployment strategy, but rather why did, why are these young people carrying guns? And how can we change their minds about carrying guns? So it's, it's a number of things we're looking at. We are looking at the deployment strategy. That's very, very important. But we're looking at why they either weren't in school during school hours and why they either had guns or were in the company of those who did. And so that's the, I think that is where we want to focus, because that's within our control to study and try to fix with, with your help.
Yeah, cool. So, so another question I want to ask you, Mr. Commissioner, is how are we looking on recruitment far as for Baltimore City Police Officers? And are there any, like, any incentives that we're giving to try to invite those individuals over to Baltimore City?
Well, recruitment, we're, we're doing as much, if not more than anybody in the state regarding recruitment and incentives. And we started a class last week. The mayor and I went to meet and we greeted 19 recruits that started last week. I would love to have seen pre-COVID numbers of 40, 45 and 50 that were starting in 2019 and early 2020. Those numbers have declined as have numbers everywhere, in every jurisdiction, literally across America. So we started a class last week. I would say recruiting is going well compared to many who are not either recruiting at all or recruiting not as well as we are. We would love to be able to do more. And yes, we have incentives. We have a $5,000 sign-on bonus for every member signing on. And we can give you some of the, I think we have some of those numbers. We have a $5,000 referral bonus for any of our current members as an incentive, as a retention incentive, to refer people who they know who might have an interest in law enforcement, particularly our agency. And there's no cap. So if you refer three people, we give you 15,000. We give you half when they're hired, half when they graduate the academy. But that's for officers from zero to 15 years. If you have over 15 years, we'll give you 7,500 per person. We have a $12,000 housing allowance where we will give you $1,000 a month for the first year to live in the city. Or you can use the 12,000 if you bring it to us to purchase a home. Or if you're a member already and you want to move back into the city, we will offer that to you as well. We give a $5,000 student debt assistance. So if you come to us as a member of the agency and say, I have student loan debt, demonstrate that to us with your documentation, we'll give you $5,000 for student loan debt. We've doubled the patrol incentive from 1,000 to 2,000. We've doubled the education incentive to where it's now, I believe, 2,500 for associates, 35 for bachelors, 4,500 for graduate. It was half that before we changed it. And then we doubled the field training officer incentive to entice more people to train. So while many people are giving sign-on bonuses, nobody is doing the collective collaborative, all that I just listed. And it's more than anybody else in the, in the state. So yes, we have a number, those are the incentives that we have to recruit. And we have some of the numbers of who have, who've accepted the sign-on bonus, the referral bonus, the housing allowance, the student debt, and we are tracking that weekly and monthly and quarterly.
And as, as I mentioned, you know, many times, it takes a village, it takes, you know, it's not just one agency that we point fingers. It's all of us collectively in order to curb the problem that we have in Baltimore City. So what I'm asking you, Mr. Chair, is as we move forward, if we can invite, you know, also Baltimore City Police Department, you know, school police to be a part of these meetings, as well as the Sheriff's Department, so that we can all together be on one accord. I think even moving forward, what I see is like now, I see our liaisons that does a great job in our communities. I think that is important that as we move forward as well, that we have agencies from the police department, the State's Attorney's Office, including from our respective offices, how we can have, allow those individuals to have communications. Because at the end of the day, we gotta, the message gotta go across, you know, the board. What I've seen recently over in my district, and this is because of elaborate, a, a case of communication and us coming together was that we have some illegal dumping in the district. And because of the legal dumping by us dealing with the N C O officers, who I think is very, very important with meeting with the liaisons and also with our office, as opposed to just meeting at C R C meetings. What we did was that we was able to track down some individuals that were dumping thousands of tires, causing taxpayers thousands of dollars. And what we did was that we started, we, we did a sting operation, myself and over in the Eastern District. We was able to get those individuals, I believe it was on last Thursday. But that's because of the fact that they dumped on Tuesday, they felt like they could do it again. We set up an operation and we caught them on Thursday. But it was a team effort, us coming together as a whole to make sure that we not allow these individuals to come back into our community and do the illegal dumping. So we're still investigating, they're still in some investigations that's taking place. But it'll be coming to your office soon, Mr. Bates. But it's to say that is a collaborative effort, and that's what we gotta do moving forward, all agencies, no pointing fingers. But in order to move Baltimore forward, we all gotta come together and work together as a team. So again, thank you guys for coming this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
I think what the, the good councilman is trying to say, that if you dump in our city, he is personally gonna find you. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies and everybody who's here today. Appreciate it. Wanted to start by saying, you know, I had asked a few months ago, just around the communication between frontline officers and assistant State's Attorneys and just a sense that there was a real breakdown in communication. And it is clear, based on this conversation, based on my own interaction with officers in my district and around the city, that that relationship has improved a lot. And so I thank Mr. Bates and your team, as well as the Commissioner, for really making the effort to get on the same page. I think it's critically important that all the way down the chain, all the way toward the very frontline, folks understand their obligation as officers and as officers of the court to be able to address crime. That said, I'm gonna ask two questions somewhat contradictory, but stay with me. One is, there are still areas in our city where crime is festering and it feels like there is not enough intervention. And I think specifically about some of the continued open air drug markets that we have. I have spent a fair amount of time recently on Pennsylvania Avenue, over there by the library, where we are doing a peer navigator program in the library. Every time I go there, it is open air and very obvious that drugs are being distributed at all hours. I know that on the weekends, sort of taking a very different neighborhood, Federal Hill has had some real challenges with just illegal behaviors. And so I am curious when we will see as a city, when our communities can expect that we will disrupt, we will intervene, and we will not tolerate folks who are causing harm, committing crimes pretty blatantly in our neighborhoods?
I'd ask you to be just a little bit more specific. Are we talking crimes of violence or are we talking like all crime or even?
So let's start with drug distribution, like sales.
Yeah. So those are, those are things we've spent a lot of time focusing on. Those are things, those are individuals who are committing a crime that we know is tearing away at the fabric of our society, especially here in Baltimore. And the guidance is to go after and make good criminal cases against people who are selling drugs. There was a policy about the arrest of persons with simple possession of drugs, i.e. people purchasing. That, that is changing, but the capacity to begin to arrest everybody we see with that has not yet developed. We're working on that because I know you heard the, I think the State's Attorney can speak for himself about that. You heard the policy change, you heard the vision of where his office is going. The capacity for us to make those arrests and bring all of that to him right now does not yet exist. Those are things we are collaboratively and in agreement to work on, to roll out to the community. This is how we start, this is what we need to be doing now, this is what we need to be doing the next quarter, third quarter of the year, fourth quarter of the year. Those, those distribution of drugs, those are all crimes. Even people possessing them are crimes. And we have lost a lot. And we have lost a lot of capacity, being down more than four hundred and seventy officers. So we had to prioritize the calls we're going to versus the proactive work we're doing to ensure that we are getting to citizens' calls on time and handling the crimes that are being committed, especially the violent crimes. Even the nonviolent property crimes, we want to make sure that, number one, we're responding, we get there on time, we take the report, we investigate those. When it comes to drug dealing, other nuisance crimes, other crimes that are not violent or property, but nonetheless are crimes, trespassing, all the other nonviolent, non-property crimes. Yes, we respond to that, but we're working to build the capacity on how to enforce that, with whom we should be enforcing, and what enforcement looks like. Because we have to start with the least intrusive, most effective, which is warnings, citations, and/or arrests, because all of them are not arrestable offenses at first. But we are working together to determine, from a prosecutorial standpoint and a policy to deliver training and instruction, how do we do that? And with which case do we start with a warning? And with which case do we start with a citation likewise with an arrest?
And to be clear, Commissioner, I think that everyone in this room would agree that all policing needs to be constitutional, that it needs to be in alignment with our consent decree. Where I struggle a little bit is not necessarily that everything needs to result in an arrest, but that there does need to be an intervention when we have blatant crimes being committed. Because I think the message that it sends when there is no interaction, there is no intervention, I saw this a lot in my own district in Falls Point for a couple of years, frankly, over the summers, is we have ceded control and are not interested or able to enforce the laws. And so even if it isn't, the, the cuffs come on, but that officers are consistently engaging, are interacting, are out of the cars, are addressing crime and folks who are committing crimes in ways that are clearly constitutional, I think is incredibly important. And regardless of the shortage, I think needs to occur, given that, you know, this is a department where we spend a outsized amount of our budget. And so I think to me, I, I want to make sure that even taking into consideration the rebuilding work that State's Attorney Bates needs to do in his office and that the recruitment challenges and shortages that you all have, that we are not allowing certain areas to become lawless because we know that ultimately usually leads to violence.
I don't think I disagree with you. And let me just be very, very clear. I don't disagree with you. I just want to make sure that when we talk about enforcement of crime, that we make sure we're defining crime appropriately. Because all crime is not equal and all crime is not the same. And some things are nuisance offenses, but some nuisance offenses get titled crime. For example, a violent offense like murder is very serious. It's titled crime. Something like trespassing is also titled crime, and they're not to be dealt with the very same. So I, I want to be, be very clear. We do enforce and we do agree, all of us here agree that the officers should be engaged. And that's the guidance we give them, to disrupt and interrupt and when appropriate, enforce. And enforcement can mean anything from your presence to deter it all the way to arrest and everything in between. But we want to make sure we're giving guidance, clear guidance, on when to give a warning, when to give citations or summonses, and when to arrest. And there are sometimes the, the instruction may be not to arrest, sometimes it will be. But we give, I want you to know that we give those instructions to engage, to be out of the cars. Does everybody follow that every single time? No, that's something we always have to work on and double down in our supervision to check and to verify and to ensure that they're doing it. And that's, that's areas I challenge my team to improve on every single day.
Like I said, I've seen more engagement and just a different mentality overall by officers over the past few months since State's Attorney Bates took office and since I think the policies have become more clear. And I hope to see more. And again, it does not always need to result in an arrest, but to allow folks to blatantly sell drugs in front of people, I think requires some form of intervention, whatever that is. And I'm going to pivot to sort of the, the user of drugs. We now know in twenty twenty-three that drug use addiction is part of mental health disorder, that it really, the way we prosecuted the war on drugs was misguided, racist, resulted in mass arrests. And that we really need to figure out a different way of supporting people who struggle with addiction that does not just result in being thrown in a jail cell. I'm really interested, both sort of Monsey and I know our State's Attorney is passionate about this as well, but when we talk about diversion, what does that specifically look like? And what is our capacity around diversion? So that we are supporting people to move toward treatment and to move toward being able to reestablish a sense of normalcy within their own lives, whether that means medically assisted treatment or whatever the case may be. But how are we thinking about this idea of diversion, knowing that we're a city that loses almost three times as many people to overdose deaths as we do to homicide? Even though we don't talk about that number nearly as much, we lose an enormous amount of people to overdose. So I am curious about that part of the conversation, both from the Monsean State's Attorney perspective.
Well, thank you, Councilman Cohen. Well, that, right now, we're having those conversations. Remember January third? Looked at the Police Commissioner, I said, hey, we now will start and please have the officers enforce low-level crimes. But the problem is, State's Attorney's Office, where we are right now, didn't have the capacity. So the police squad make a bunch of arrests, system's going to break. It's just not going to work. So understand that, that's where the training process comes in. But also, I think, here's important, I have a deputy, Greg Solomon, and she deals specifically with this, and this is her pet project. And the reason why I feel very good about having her in the position is because she ran Drug Treatment Court in the State's Attorney's Office. So she definitely understands that. Twenty-some-odd-year experience prosecutor, has seen, you know, put violent criminals in prison, but also understands the soft touch. And right now, what we've done, and we're now sitting down, having these conversations with Monsey, with the Police Department, with the court, with the stakeholders, with downtown partnerships we've talked to, to understand what we can do. We would eventually like to have what's called a citation court. And this way, the police aren't removed from their, from their post. If they give a citation, we can divert these individuals. And there we have the wraparound services. Not necessarily the State's Attorney's Office doing the wraparound services, but then we partner with someone such as Monsey. Because Monsey already has everything set up. And so that is the conversation that right now we're in the process of having. How does this really work? How, what can we do? Because you're right, I'm very concerned about drug treatment. We saw in twenty twelve, we had drug treatment through the courts, there were five hundred and eighty-five people enrolled in that, in drug treatment programs. I think they had fifty-eight overdose deaths in that year. Then in twenty twenty, if I'm not mistaken, there were eighty-five, or fifty-six people enrolled in drug treatment programs through the courts, and they had over a thousand overdose deaths. So having a person such as Deputy Solomon who understands this, we've already sat down and talked to the organizations that look with courts having drug treatment, what those programs look like, how can they work, how can they expand? Have those conversations with drug treatment providers and making sure it's a lot different now than twenty twelve because individuals have the opportunity to have quote-unquote "health insurance" in a lot of ways. And so understanding how that works, these are the conversations we're having. Our goal is to really have a citation court. It doesn't put that much stress or strain on the Police Department. We're not trying to lock up individuals for this. We're trying to direct them and toward the diversion style programs. However, we also have to be cognizant of the fact, if these individuals, some individuals don't want to ever do that, then we have to deal with them accordingly in a different fashion, and those are the conversations we're having as well. But the first is making sure the court was on board. And when the court's on board, maybe we have a judge. I had the opportunity with the go with Monsey, Representative from Monsey, the Chief of Staff, to New York to see what they're doing with these programs up in New York and how they're making these programs work. It was very, very informative, it was very good. Went to Brooklyn, and we also looked at the programs in Manhattan, how the court's involved. If the court's not involved, if we don't have collaborative working relationship with the Police Department, if we don't have collaborative working relationship with Monsey, it's not going to work. And I think really what we have is, we have the relationships, we're working on relationships, we're building relationships. We have an idea where, and now is the implementation of the plan. But for me, I'm letting the individuals that have the best experience have those conversations.
Yeah, and just to echo and build on that, I mean, we are, I think, a hundred percent committed to working with our partners to implement. I was just, we were on the phone with Greg last week, talking about this exact issue. And I think she was encouraged that she was having that conversation with us and that she, she said that State's Attorney Bates kept telling her, call Monsey, call Monsey, get on the phone with them. So I think our new, so we have, our Mark Mason, our Victim Services Associate Director, came over from the Health Department. So he, and I think you, you know him and have worked with him, you know, he, we're well positioned to do this exact work. And with him directing it and with the rest of our staff that works on really providing services, connecting people to the services in all ways, and it's, it's really casework. So it's, you know, if you, if you talk to him about each case, it literally is whatever they need to help them. So, and that obviously, treatment is a huge piece of that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the approach from the State's Attorney's Office. I will say, we have a strong network of peers that have been operating out of our library system. We started that about a year ago, got a big grant from Care First to expand it. And so I think for you all to connect these different pieces is important. And my final point on this, I know that Councilmember Porter and I served on the Governor's Transition Team, Health, the Health Subcommittee, and this is a real priority for him as well. And so I do believe that with Special Assistant Keller, who is doing their opioid work, there's some real interest in how do we invest in and figure out different models? And so I think this is a really opportune moment to bring some of that work together.
Thank you. I agree. Yeah, it's a great opportunity.
Look forward to following up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I want to follow up on slightly different but related topic around diversion programming. And, you know, when I described this sort of life cycle of crime, that is one of the outcomes from an initial arrest or us figuring out who the person is, will, you know, deter them into some other program. And I was curious, I, I think that is generally managed by Monsey, is that correct? Or State's Attorney's Office, I'm not sure, who sort of keeps the data on what happens in those instances where we divert folks from the sort of penal system to assistance? Who sort of oversees that?
I guess I would need clarification. I think it depends on what the diversion entails exactly, who has the data.
Please explain it to me.
Well, from our standpoint, once again, we're, I'm starting over. And so if you give me the opportunity, let me research that, and I have the answer to you at the next meeting.
I appreciate that. Thank you. The, the reason why I ask that question, this always goes back to data. You guys probably hate hearing me talk about data. But I think it's really important for us, with limited resources, to leverage data to make sensible decisions, the right decision at the right time and the right moment. So I, I was really curious with regards to our diversion programming, and maybe Monsey has some of this data. Because I know this is something that I've requested specifically that we track with, with some of our dashboards. Do we know what's working? Do we know what isn't working? Do, do we know why? And do we have any insight like that to tell us, you know, what, what we can do to inform other programs throughout the city?
I mean, I think the short answer is I want to look at the data and get back to you on that.
Okay, that's fine.
But again, the other thing that I think might get lost is the distinctions between when we talk about diversion. There's everything from youth diversion programs, some of which I think we have some good data on what did work. And we want to, and a little bit, and we have data on the sidestep in, in the Western, and we, what we want to do is build on what we already know works and revive a lot of that or expand it to the rest of the district. But then there's also a lot of division, divergent conversations for adults. And yeah, I want to, some of that, I think, we, is, is more in the planning stages and some of it, we may have some data to share.
I, I look forward to talking that through. I think when we talk about this issue and we talk about the tools that we have at play for us, it's the carrot and the stick. And diversion program is, in many ways, the carrot. We've talked a lot about prosecution, we've talked a lot about the stick, we talk a lot about arrests. And I'm curious, for that carrot side of things, what, what is working? So I, you know, look forward to coming back to that conversation later. The other question that had-
If I may for one second.
Please.
I think that's probably got to be broken down into, for example, crime, drug addiction. Crimes, adults, juveniles. Drug addiction, diversion, adults, juveniles. And I think that's what I'm hearing you-
Yes.
-ask.
And I, I would also suggest-
And then there's GVRs exclusively, where people are being diverted away from a path of crime to, to wraparound services because they become candidates for the GVRs. So there's GVRs exclusive, then there's other crime outside of GVRs, which could be a, a juvenile for a robbery or carjacking, could be diverted for wraparound services.
Right.
But then there are drug cases where people are diverted not because of the crime of drugs, but for the addiction issue. And I, I think that's got to be, I think that's what I hear you asking, and I think that's got to be broken down.
That, that is precisely what I'm looking for. And I think much to the, you know, the insight that I spoke about earlier with regards to domestic violence and why a lot of those cases were being thrown out.
Yes.
When we start looking at some of our diversion programming and why it is or is not meeting the needs of the people that came into contact with the program initially, I would love to sort of see, for the different types of programming and the different interventions, what is, what has and has not been successful and what we understand to be the reason why it hasn't been successful.
But I think that data exists in multiple agencies and is limited probably to a specific agency. Like GVRs, deferral programs are probably Monsey-related. Drug arrests might be something totally different, juveniles or Department of Juvenile Services. Adults are going to be something different and for other kinds of crime, it very well. So I think each of us has a different thing, not all of it.
And I also might suggest, and I realize there's a lot of data collection going on, some that we may have available, some of it, we only need a strong sense of where we lie today. We may not need to necessarily track that on ending for every single person all the time. But I think we want to be able to answer very fundamental questions about where we are today. So that, you know, for the rest of the State's Attorney's term, he can be thinking about what he's building toward and the changes that he's got to make in his office likewise and, and the Police Department. And my, my, my last question here, one of the things we, we talked about, I want to say, maybe a year or two ago, I'm losing track of time. This term is going by so fast, was in the midst of the pandemic, we ended up with a huge backlog in our court system. And that really kind of gummed up everything with regards to prosecutions. I'm curious, Mr. Bates, are we still seeing any effects of that backlog? And how does that affect cases today, if you can try to answer that?
Without a doubt, we're still seeing the effects. For instance, let me just talk about the homicide division. The homicide division tend to be some of your most skilled prosecutors. You also have phenomenal prosecutors in, in SVU. You have them in other divisions. But the homicide divisions, you have every single homicide prosecutor carrying a minimum of twenty homicides. So let me put that in perspective. When I was a homicide prosecutor, I think I carried eleven or twelve. That's because you usually would try a homicide once a month. If you're carrying twenty or more, you're usually now prosecuting two homicides a month, which is absolutely absurd because you need to have the opportunity to do your investigations and to prepare your cases for your homicide investigations. Bless you. You also need to understand to me what the work it needs in terms of the hours invested for a homicide prosecution. Once again, body camera footage, homicide prosecutors spending forty to seventy hours reviewing body camera footage. Now, you understand hunting down victims and witnesses and interviewing them, that could be another ten, twenty hours. Then spending the time period making sure you work with the detectives, talk to detectives in preparation. And so what we're finding is that because of the backlog from the pandemic, they're still trying to play catch-up. Now, the police are doing their part, they're making more arrests, more homicides, more investigations. And so from our standpoint, what do we need? We need to make sure we go out, we, we educate the prosecutors, prepare the prosecutors, remove the prosecutors. My office, one of the things that we're not, I recently asked my executive team to do, let's talk about our tract in terms of moving individuals. How can we pick these individuals? Where are the individuals? How soon will these individuals be ready to move up? And when are they going to move up? So, you know, you have the district courts, you have the- So, you know, you have the district court, you have the circuit court, you know, misdemeanor, is it going to felony, are they going to SVU, are they going narcotics? What are we looking at? What does the data potentially show us in terms of the arrest so we can make sure we're prepared? And so the violent crimes, we're still backed up on and the prosecutors are doing all they can. But to be honest, I don't really think we're going to solve that until we have more prosecutors who are able to be prepared and take some of those cases.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And, yeah, that's very helpful. Is there anything that we should be thinking about, and I guess to Councilwoman Porter's question, your budget requests, that we should be thinking about when digging ourselves out of that hole?
Well, one of the things, we also have to look at the pay for prosecutors. You know, when I got there, I looked at, remember prosecutors are lawyers. With lawyers, you can make a lot more money in the private sector. So we're dealing with that, we're also dealing with quality of life. And so when you have a prosecutor who, let's say they're now almost in the peak of their career and now they decide they want to go ahead and have a family, what's going to happen? I just lost one the other day, did everything I could to keep this young lady. But part of the issue is also money, to be honest. When I found out my homicide prosecutor somewhere only making $83,000, $90,000, one of the first things I did, we made a request, should be over here, saying everybody is in homicide, you'd have to make at least $100,000. And we looked at in terms of experience level and things like that. And so without a doubt, it's always going to be pay, 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 pay. And we're making sure that the level of pay goes with the individual's experience level. And that's what we're trying to do. We're also now going to look into our office and look at what it looks like. So when you're in misdemeanor and you go to felony, where's the pay bump? Should there be a pay bump? And what, is it just anybody or do you want to do it so that the prosecutors know where they will be and how they make more money? So that's where we're going to, where we want to be. We actually love that, and I think we're going to send a request to have a consultant firm let us know what other people are doing, how we can make a better request. Because at the end of the day, they have law school loans, they have law school debt. And by the time we train them, then they leave, it breaks your heart in more ways than you know. And then what that does, it means prosecutors are always carrying 20 murders, now they're carrying 22 murders. And now that vacation they wanted to spend with their family for two weeks, now that's only a week vacation. But when they're on a vacation, they're already thinking about how do I prepare for the case as soon as I get back. And so for us, that's the balance that we're trying to find out. I'd love to have another 20 laterals come straight to homicide, but that's not going to happen. So I recognize, quote unquote, we have to do it the oral way, we're training them. There are some really, really good young prosecutors who are fighting really hard, but it's just going to take some time. But you'll see the budget request for us because once again, it is pay.
That helps a lot, thank you. And you remind me of a hearing we had some time ago, this thing goes to BPD regarding backlogs in our lab. Can we talk about where we are there? I know that's something, you know, we talked about how we prioritize and otherwise, if we could talk a little bit about where we are in the labs and if you could come to the, to a microphone, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, actually, thank you for the question because I think we're actually doing really well. You know, there's some, the biggest backlog is in DNA because that unit takes the most amount of time and the process itself is just really long. And, you know, everybody wants DNA on everything, so they ask us to do a lot of that. But firearms is pretty much real time. We have everything out within 24 to 48 hours with the leads. They come out really quick. I think almost a little, sometimes too quick for some of the investigators, they're moving real fast on that one. Latent prints is real time and homicides and sex offense and all other violent crimes. We're a little bit behind on property crimes, but they're, they have a task to have 25% of their casework be from property crimes. So they're doing a good job with that this year. And drugs is basically run by how the court dates are, so they're meeting all of the court dates that they get in every day. So I would say we're in a pretty good spot. I don't really know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but the main deficit in the inside lab parts is DNA and that's really just staffing. That's mostly that issue. There are a couple of things that we have to decline, like, you know, there are certain services that people want us to do that we can't, so we do limit a little bit. So some of those backlog numbers are driven by like us kind of being restricted about what we accept. So if there were, you know, a need for expanded services, that would have to come along with some staffing stuff, but generally speaking, I think we're doing pretty well.
And we, how are we with vacancies in the crime lab?
We are in the process of doing a ton of hiring. Our crime scene unit just finished some interviews and there are 12 spots for that, so we should have those guys coming on board. And recently, there've been some improvements in HR, so they're getting here really quick. And then there's some extra grant funding that's come our way, so there's some positions that were frozen prior to COVID that we're going to be able to open up again. So we're in the process of getting all that stuff done with the pins and having all that posted and I think that's going to wind up with another 10. So that'll help a lot. You know, if we can keep those forever, that'd be great. But, yeah, we're doing, we're filling those up as soon as we can. And we do not have the same issue that the police have with recruitment. You know, we have an internship program, so I had 100 people apply to that. And when we have crime scene openings, there's usually about 300 people that apply to that. So we're real lucky that we're in an area where universities have basically feeder programs for us and we do not have a problem with recruitment.
I had a, a little aside, had a conversation with the folks over at Loyola about the partnership we have with them.
Yeah.
And they were really, really excited about the pipeline that we've created and it sounds like that's going well, so.
Yeah, if I could just give you an anecdote about that. That program came out of a conversation with one of the directors there, who's great, Dr. Rivers, he's amazing, and-
Can you explain what it is for everyone else in the room?
Oh, yeah. So Loyola, so there's a ton of forensic programs that are biology and chemistry, so we can get a biology or chemist into the biology or chemistry units really quickly. So Towson has a program for that, you know, like, there's a ton for crime scene. The problem in universities is there's, it's really hard to get comparative sciences done. So the comparative sciences are firearms and latent prints mostly. And so, you know, we don't have a problem finding biologists and chemists and crime scene folks, but for the latent print and firearms units, it's hard because we have to, we have to basically take a biologist, because that's where they come from, and turn them into like a pattern evidence analyst. And so that takes us probably somewhere around two and a half years, maybe a little bit longer, depending on, you know, COVID. We had one person that took four and a half years to get through. And so it actually winds up being more of like an apprenticeship than the other disciplines are. And so we went to Loyola and my, the director at MSP and myself, we went to Loyola and was like, look, this is what we need, this is the deficit. Like, if we could hire people with the degrees like we can with bio and chemistry, we would be able to move a lot faster with getting people out. And so they were like, okay, cool. And there are no programs, there's no master's degrees that are in the comparative disciplines anywhere in the nation, so this is the first one. They have a lot of like hybrid ones that are for the undergrads, but this is the first one in the United States and they graduated their first cohort last year, so it's been three years now. And we hired one of their students and she is testing out of about 50% of our training program, so she'll be done in about a year. So we're really excited about this. This is a really big win for us and for Baltimore, so it's been really great. There's also, I think, someone at PIB that graduated from the program, so they're kind of going everywhere.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad to hear it's going well.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I did. Ma'am, if you could come back to the podium, please.
Uh.
Thank you. Mark and I are on the same wavelength today. I wanted to bring up a report that I just pulled up related to the Sex Crimes Monthly Briefing Report, the data from February, which is kind of like the data from January 1st to year-to-date. And I want to kind of talk through, you mentioned that there was a reduction in those lag cases for testing. Does that align with rape kits? Because the numbers presented in this report, it's only like four of the rape kits that have been tested year-to-date.
I don't, I'm not familiar with that report, but that's not correct.
Okay.
We focus in DNA. We actually have a screening program that went online, I think we're in our second year now. Just to be super technical about it, it's called Y-Screen. And basically what that does is it allows us to identify if there's male DNA in a sample real early. And then we can determine which cases we're going to move forward with, if there's nothing there. And then we can say, you know, these are done, the other ones need to move forward. It's actually really kind of innovative because they want, I think most places are moving to 100% testing and we're already there with that. So we're one of the first ones, I think, in the state that do 100% testing, that's 100% DNA testing. So for us, we have, we have a whole set of historical kits and then current kits. And we do them in two separate categories. And we have two people that are dedicated just to doing those sex offense kits. So I think we're close to real time on contemporary kits and we're working on the backlog of older ones.
So I find it really interesting, this is a Baltimore City Police Department report where it came up with these monthly numbers of the open investigations at 40 and the kits, the safe kits that you're describing, the ones that were conducted, requested for analysis, analysis completed, and those that were pending analysis. And so I think there's a discrepancy with kind of like, you know, the real-time reporting in this report that I believe just came out, it was 2/28. So I believe that it was February numbers. And so I'm wondering, in the eight days that we've been in March, how it has kind of caught up?
I think, so we don't really, we're not really tied to what the investigations, how far they're going with the investigation. So we do, you know, everything that we get in. So they submit all the kits to us and maybe this is, you know, like you said, like that there's a lag. If you give me a second, I can text my group and I can tell you.
Yeah, and more importantly, I kind of want to, because I mean, I'm specifically looking and when you get the report, I can actually send it to you. I'm looking on page two, the laboratory data specifically for safe kits and latent prints. There seems to be some sort of discrepancy with the data shared today and the data presented in this report.
Yeah, if you can send it to me and then I can just get some data back for you and I'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions, Councilwoman Glover?
No.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Well, thank you all. I appreciate really the work that you guys have been doing to work together. I think it's a really, really important step toward getting us to a better situation with crime in the city. I know we're all working incredibly hard, but I think working together, thinking about how the handoff happens is really important and clearly we still have a lot of work to do and we, as a council, look forward to being partners in that as much as possible. So, thank you, guys. This hearing is in recess.